I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sorry, may I ask something quick? Alright, so I know John is not here tonight, I know Sharon is in drop, so she won't be joining us at least yet. But we have the three of us here, so we will proceed on. Alright, approval of the June tenth minutes in the special meeting?
Should I read, or do you want to approve? Any questions?
Give me a second, your fans have a little...
Yep.
There were two documents, Vance, which one? The one at eleven thirty? I'll pick the one at eleven thirty, the minutes. That looks like the latest file.
Yeah, that's the regular meeting and you got the special meeting.
Yeah.
Alright, that one looks, that one looks good to me, I don't see anything on there that jumps out, that's what we talked about. For the July tenth meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Alright, Brian does the first and Dave does the second. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, alright.
And the special meeting, that was regarding Chestnut Drive.
Right.
We approved the agenda unanimously, there were about thirty residents that were here. The project will include forty-six homes at this time. The city, I will accept protest letters until July nineteenth, which I do have a few. And I just included that there will be perhaps future discussions to follow.
Yep.
So you can approve that separately or together, whatever you want.
I'm motioning to approve it separately.
Separately, alright.
Yep, second.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, on the consent. Let's see here. Two bigger items here, waste management, seventeen thousand eight sixty-three is our monthly contract. Which includes, Brian, that includes our pickup out here at the...
Okay.
Landfill, or what do you call it?
The yard waste.
Yep.
Yard waste pickup, so that has been running about fifteen hundred dollars a week, I think is what I got from Paul.
That, that's pretty close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we've been paying around forty-five, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
You get the idea. So it's, it's a lot of money during the summer and considering how many times they've had to go pull it off, so Adam, have you done any more than once or twice a week for that?
Usually it's just been twice a week generally.
It's been, but it's been twice a week at both bins? Holy wow.
Yeah, both of them are on every week, generally.
Does this happen even when we don't get wind of them sitting knockoff limbs on the trees and stuff? I mean, this is just an ongoing event.
Every, every time I go out there, there's, I'm either waiting in line for somebody or...
Plus, I just wonder if it was more frequent when we had, you know, weather issues going through town.
Definitely, there's a lot more than that, but no, it's pretty...
But there's a steady otherwise, yeah.
Yeah, and random couches, you know.
Oh, so people are still posting or putting crap in there, even so?
Yeah, I've got more pictures I, I gotta send you.
We gotta sit down and...
If you send me some photos, I can post that and let people know that that's still happening, that's just wrong.
We have to think about where we put it and we're gonna have, or we're gonna have to add electricity out there and put...
But I mean, it's...
Surveillance.
Granted, it's for the summer months, but six thousand dollars a month? That's a lot of money that we're spending on yard waste.
Now, we're gonna have to either...
Anyway, alright, let's keep moving, let's keep moving.
Okay, nothing else there that is, jumps out at me, so?
Okay, everything else looks good, so can I get a motion to accept it?
I just have one question, that, the Cass County Treasurer, the law contract, is that just a yearly fee we have to pay?
That's a monthly fee.
Monthly fee.
The, our contract is a hundred and fifty thousand a year. We talked about it in the budget tonight.
Okay.
That's for two deputies.
Oh, that's what that, okay.
Yes.
Oh, that's how, okay, it said vendor, the Cass County Treasurer, could they have put that together right away?
I didn't either, sorry, I didn't know, I just thought that was something different, okay.
That's who they want to check right now.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
That's our deputies, got it.
Yep, law enforcement contract, gotcha.
Yes, thank you.
We're all good now.
Can't be.
Okay?
Nope.
Brian, you got anything?
Nope.
Okay?
Nope.
Accept a motion to accept here?
So approved.
Yeah, I saw what you said.
Second.
Dave? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
There we go.
We're gonna agree to get through it.
Um, Mr. Mayor Peterson?
Sir, go ahead.
Before you approve the regular agenda, on my side, I, I think I'm gonna scratch the contract with all that Cass County and tell Dave and I get a chance to study that a little more.
Alright, so we'll take the...
Unless, Dave, unless you want that on your portfolio tonight?
No, no, because you and I have to work through it, so just what I said, it's probably next meeting, I won't be here, but Vance will be here and he can review it, we'll prepare everything for...
So scratch that, I bet we're not quite ready, and I did mail the letter that Lucas prepared to Mr. Senator that I have not heard back.
Okay, fair enough. Alright, is there anything?
So having said that, I'm good to go.
Lucas?
Well, will you please add to my agenda direct levy of assessments?
Okay, anything else you want to add on there? Okay. Any else, gentlemen? Okay, now...
Motion to approve the regular agenda?
With amendments.
With amendments or changes?
With additions.
With additions, yeah.
Okay, so Brian was first, Dave's got a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we'll proceed on. Lucas, that brings us to you, proceed.
Well, the first item I have is the final plat for Lost River Edition, and I see that there's only documents for that, but...
Well, have, have the documents changed since?
Yeah, I have, I printed some out just in case.
Okay.
It'll be two pages per, but it's, yeah, it's the final plat for it. Um, the road got extended, so one of the lots, it didn't have access before, so it just got brought down. Um, so that's lots in the far corner would have access. So, sir? So it extends down so then this lot has access.
Oh, okay. So you see that right here, just extension right here?
Got that, that little bit there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Lot eight, then that covers lot, that lot eight, okay.
And the planning commission approved this final plat at their July eleventh meeting.
Okay. So I'm assuming then Russell, you didn't really have any other, any other issues with this?
No, we didn't.
Seems pretty cut dry.
He had some, so he said some minor technical issues, but they were addressing.
Okay. But, but as far as...
As far as, we're fine.
Alright, so then I'm gonna accept a motion for the...
Is this a state's public hearing, is this a public hearing?
Do I need to open that up then?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll open it up for a public input on this final plat for Lost River Third Edition. Anybody's got anything you want to say about that? Anybody here to talk about it? Okay, then I will close the public hearing, and I will accept a motion for the final plat.
So move.
Unless you guys got some more questions?
Nope.
Okay, Brian?
So move.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, done with that one, Lucas, you got another couple here.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the next item I have would be Lakeview Heights Second Edition. Um, we did the rezone at the last meeting on July tenth, so this is just a second reading of that, and it's it kept egg where the school's gonna go, and then it switched to, um, the commercial development on the other lots.
West side.
Yep, the neighborhood commercial, so this is just a second reading of that, because it's, it is an ordinance.
Yep, and nothing has changed with that, did I take it?
Nope.
Thing is as is, so? You guys have any questions on this?
No.
Just cutting it right to, so?
Yeah.
Accept a motion to accept the second reading, so move rezone, okay?
Second.
Dave, Brian, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so leads us to our next deal here, Lucas?
Are we finally done with the fireworks?
We will, we will be. Hopefully, we will be.
No, no, we'll bring it back up another time next year.
We'll bring it back, you just wait.
And shake his head.
We haven't beat this enough.
I've been typing this for four months.
Yeah, exactly.
Hopefully, it ends today, this will be the, the second reading of the ordinance, it changed this, there's now a fine of one hundred dollars, and we, we're still in agreement with that.
Yep.
Yes.
So, this will just be the second reading of that ordinance as well.
I'm assuming you guys have no questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope, there were...
We've pretty much gone through this one ad nauseam, so I will accept a motion to accept the second reading of the fireworks ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Brian, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And move along.
Lucas, pull up microphone a little bit closer, yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, the next item, um, we have, per the North Coast entry code, it says after that thirty day period, that protest period, we'll have a protest hearing if any protests come in, and then the city council will determine the sufficiency of those protests. Um, I went through the list that Vance provided from the Chestnut group, and there were enough homes in there, so they did protest that, we verified it. So that project, um, will have to go back to them if they would like to do something else, but right now, that one's done.
Okay, so what, do we consider the, the protests, what is, what is the status of the project, and it just, it's dead, or we have to go back to?
It's, it's dead, so now it's...
Engineering analysis, basically, because...
Are they gonna have to come back with something, or is this, I mean?
That, that's, that's what I was...
I would let them come back with something.
Because that's how we left it, we'd like them to see what it is that they want done.
So, the good news is, is they did schedule a meeting for tonight, the neighborhood did, so...
Okay, so they're, they're...
Yep, I don't know if it's actually got scheduled tonight or got postponed, but last I heard, it was scheduled for tonight.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, so I think just put the ball in their court and then find out what they want to do and then pick it up from there.
But in, in essence, what we should do is, we should post that the protest was successful, I guess.
A sufficient protest, you could say.
Sufficient protest to, you know, stop the project, so we can make that...
To bar proceeding with the, the improvement district.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, other than that, um, I don't know if there are any other ones, but there would have to be fifty percent, and I don't think Vance did get...
You're talking about the Northwood, Southwood?
For the, for the other one, for the two other ones?
Right.
Yeah, I, I didn't think there were any other ones, I think it's just Chestnut that we received protests for.
I have nothing on that.
And nothing for Maple Lane, because Maple Lane was the same time lane, right?
They all were.
They all were, the three were on the same time.
Right, right, but, well, oh, they were on the same protest announcement?
Period.
Period, right, right, same.
That's thirty days.
I sent to our development, and, uh, we have a development email list, I sent basically the information to everyone, and Maple Lane plus, put it on our, we have a Facebook group, and I only got like, uh, three people to ask questions, so, and I communicated.
But nobody, nobody was against it.
If you're not in favor of this protest, then send this information to the city, so if you have not gotten anything...
And I know there was at least...
They've been told multiple times.
There was at least one question for Northwood, Southwood, but I didn't, we obviously didn't receive any protests for that. Okay. So that period closed now?
Closed July nineteenth.
That's what I thought, that closed July nineteenth as well.
Yeah, so the entry code says that the city council's next regular meeting, you have a protest hearing to discuss the sufficiency thereof, and there was only protest for Chestnut, and they were sufficient.
Okay, so those, those city projects are essentially approved?
The two.
They, they can, they can proceed, they, they've made it through the protest period, now we can proceed with next steps?
Yep.
Engineering, engineering, okay?
So I guess that's, that's all for that.
Yeah, that's us figuring, so let me move on to the next part here.
So, the next one is a motion to direct a levy of assessments, and it's for three projects, two thousand, you can do it in one motion, for two thousand sixteen dash one, two thousand sixteen dash three, and two thousand seventeen dash one.
Okay, can we quick, just reiterate what those three projects are?
Yep, yep, absolutely, um, so two thousand sixteen dash one is...
That's the looping, right, lining?
Sewer Improvement District.
Well, that's the lining?
Okay.
Two thousand sixteen three is a water improvement district, that one's the...
Looping.
Looping, and then two thousand seventeen dash one is Lost River. Or the Lost Rivers.
Yeah.
So with, so with the motion, it's to direct that those, yeah, the assessment commission then can meet, and then, um, give you those out.
Yeah. So move to direct the assessment committee to proceed?
Second.
Second by Dave, okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Perfect, okay, so we can get on with that then, and get that show started.
Should I have any contact there?
I, well, depending on what we do with the, yep, but yes, um, I think we could probably meet tomorrow at three, if that works for them.
Well, so you're literally meeting that quickly?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
When does it have to be done by?
Yeah, because these lists have to be done by October, and there's quite a bit of notice periods that you have to have, and, and I don't know if the commission's gonna get them done in one meeting.
Right, so after, Lucas, if Cory, or if the board approves the new person, then you want me to contact the three of them tomorrow?
I've already contacted Steve, and then, but yeah, if you could contact, Marshall and Karen. But yes, that'll depend on, on that.
The three lots, just, just, just as soon as they're off.
Yeah, if it's available.
Alright, so...
Mr. Mayor, that's...
That's your list, right?
Takes care of my list.
That's gotta be a record.
That's gotta be a record.
That's gotta be a record.
We've got the steam, we've got the engine going.
We've got the momentum.
Wow.
Okay, Jimmy, no pressure on you, bud.
No, I'm never any. I can slow down as well as speed it up.
Thanks a lot, man, appreciate that.
Alright, Mr. Mayor Council, I changed up the way that I'm displaying these status updates.
No.
Is there anything that you guys want to see additionally on there?
This is good.
It's a little cleaner to kind of pick through, and it kind of fits the, fits the way you guys have stuff, so anyways, um, I'll just hit on the big ones, there's not a lot of activity since the last two weeks, but, um, on the sewer project, as you can see, all the equipment out front, they did start lining and coating that lift station today. Uh, that work was completed today, but it is still on bypass, the lining has to cure and the epoxy has to cure, and then Haggard's have to put the thing back together.
Maybe that would be one additional column to add here as projected completion.
Sure.
So, but that one out front here was basically rebuilt though, wasn't it, or?
It was, it was not, it was sprayed with a cement liner, a mortar, and then it was coated in an epoxy.
Okay.
So...
So they were able to do that from what I...
We're getting to that, there was, there was two parts to this, two parts to this one.
Couple of issues along with it. Can't just be that simple, no. No way.
No, it never can.
Nope.
Um, so, the plan is then on Thursday to coat the last lift station over on Park and Cheyenne, so, um, and there's also two manholes outside each of those that they're going to get to also, so Cheyenne will be closed or it'll be somewhat impassable for a couple of days here while they bypass pump from both sides. Uh, the disruptions for traffic should be, I would say, it might go into next week, just depending upon how quickly they can get this one put back together.
Okay, so they're gonna put up detour?
Yeah, they've got the signage up right now, they dropped it off today, they've got it set up and...
With the traffic that's going up and down the wall, I mean, I've just seen some construction and concrete trucks and so forth, oh god, that makes me even more nervous if we're gonna be detouring people through residential areas, so somehow, do, are they putting up a sign that says local traffic only?
As far as what?
Well, the kinds of sign, signage that they're planning to put up, so that they keep any of the Lost River construction people off of wall during, while these detours are happening?
They, the, anything that goes to Lost River comes from the north, so that comes around...
North and west.
I mean, the west, yeah, the north and the west.
Okay.
Um, the residential, the residential stuff going to say river's edge, that kind of still goes through that area, but we don't really have a better way, because we don't schedule those deliveries.
I just, reason being, just tonight I saw a cement truck going over that direction, and I'm like, what's this?
Was it going to the place on, right by the community center, or the senior center?
Yeah, they're pouring concrete there.
They were doing a concrete foundation today.
So it makes sense for them to go in in the area, I was just, I'm hoping that wasn't indicative of more construction traffic that I haven't seen down there.
Right.
That's what I was worried about, okay, alright.
But we'll get to the closure on wall next. But the one item that I have, I guess I have a couple of items, is the change order that I forgot to bring last meeting, and this is for... It's increased the contract by thirty thousand four hundred eighty dollars, this is the epoxy coating that was already approved, David, you, you motioned that, I just created the paperwork for it now. And then there is some additional work in the manholes, they had to install some drop sections, when a pipe comes in up on the, higher up in the manhole, they have to put a drop section on there to bring it down, so it doesn't just splash everywhere in there, in the manhole, so there's two of those, uh, manhole one eighteen and three twenty-one.
That isn't there now, those pipes aren't there now?
They're in now, they're installed, so everything is, is correct.
Oh, okay, this is after the installation, okay.
Mm-hmm, yep, so this would be, we need a motion to approve the change order for thirty thousand four hundred eighty dollars for the epoxy coating of the left, of the lift stations, and the outlet, or the drop structures in the manholes one eighteen and one, and three twenty-one.
And this is all still within budget, right?
It is, I'm gonna have to look at that, because we do have a couple more items that came up today, but I will bring back a updated kind of where we're at within the budget for the next meeting.
This was, just to be clear, this was because the original construction is falling apart, or?
It's further gone than what we thought, yeah, and this, the, the lining of the lift stations was included in the project, is the epoxy coating, and that's something that kind of the sewer gases don't eat away at with that, so...
So the problem is, is the reason it was underestimated is that they just didn't realize it was, it was further along, more damage than they expected it to be.
And with the, with the challenges that they've been having with the bypass pumping, it makes more sense to do it now than to try to reset up another bypass and do it further down the road, so...
Okay, so I, I moved to approve the change order to expand to do the epoxy coating.
I second that. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Which one is this, for you?
Sixteen one, change order three. Brian was first?
Yep, yep, I, I motion to approve the change, change order three for the twenty-six oh one. Relating.
Okay, I'll just hit the ones that things have changed since the last two weeks, there's no reason to go over some of that. Uh, Street Improvement District, two thousand fifteen three, that's seventy-third paving, we have a change order for that project. Uh, the change order increases the project by two thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents, what this change order was, was relocating some mailboxes to allow access all the way around the cul-de-sac during construction, and the other part of it was blotter sand that was placed on the prime coat, um, to absorb any excess oil for their paving, so, not really uncommon things, but, um, they are additional to the contract. This one we will under run, and I'll have more...
Okay, so that's always, that's what I was wondering, this is all done, this is just cleaning up all last items, and this was a change order too?
There'll be one more change order that'll balance the contract with the actual constructed amounts, but I usually want to get these done first, and then we'll come back.
So the change order, what happens to those funds when it's an under run like this, is it just goes back into the... Does it just go back into the assessment district?
It's just money that's not spent, right?
Yeah, I eventually close it out, but I usually don't, I leave it run for... The money stays there on your balance sheet?
Right, that's what I mean, so the funds don't get spent, they do stay, they stay on your books for a while to make sure no final change orders roll through, but then at, when, at some point we close it out, and then?
Yes.
We send that money back to pre, basically prepay the assessment district.
Yeah, and I typically, what I do is I wait for the auditors, independent auditors, to suggest or make that decision.
Okay.
And then I do it.
Okay, so make a motion to approve the change order for the seventy-third street paving to allocate funds for the mailbox relocation?
And blotter sand.
And waters?
Blotter.
Oh, blotter sand, okay.
Second.
What he said.
Say that again.
Second.
Alright, so Brian makes a motion, Dave does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Lucas, is this on the schedule to be bonded then, this one?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, two thousand fifteen three is gonna combine two thousand sixteen two.
Yep.
Jim, how long do they think wall was gonna be closed, did they ever, did they give an idea on that?
They, they didn't, his plan is to have it open on the weekends and have it open at night if it is early enough where it would make sense.
Okay.
If they're gonna work late, late and start early, it wouldn't make much sense, but, um, no, they haven't gotten that far yet, they've just been potholing for utilities and, uh, doing some other, other work, not, not...
Yeah, I just saw him up there a day, so I just don't know if they had an idea yet, okay?
Yes. We have, I wanna, I forgot to, I gotta jump back here, uh, Brian and I talked a little bit today, they started digging into lift stations, uh, three today, and lift station three is plumbed, in the bottom of these lift stations, there's a pump.
So line in one, line in one here?
Yeah, I gotta go back, I got too far ahead of myself, and, uh, there's a pump in the bottom, it lifts it up say to about eight feet below surface, and then pushes it through force main. Uh, the discharge piping from the pump to that ninety degree bend is, on all the lift stations down is a ductile iron cast iron pipe metal. This one happens to be plastic for some reason, and it's Boeing in, in the, uh, station, so Haggard's guys were kind of reluctant to put that...
Ready to have an aneurysm, right?
Well, they didn't like the way it looked, so, um, I talked to Ben a little bit this morning, and we wanted to get a price to, to, um, change out, there's some check valves in there to prevent the water from flowing back into the lift station, uh, there's ninety degree bends that turn it to go into the valve, and then there's, uh, some other gaskets, bolts, and whatever else, so that works out to like three thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars and forty cents for, for, um, uh, lift station number three.
Where's that at?
It's at, it's at the corner of Park and Cheyenne, and this is kind of an interesting lift station, because all the other ones down have a, the separate valve vault, where the two pumps come together and pump it through force main. This one, it just comes straight out and connects outside the manhole, there's no valve vault, so it's kind of a interesting station in itself, but, um, I don't know if we need to do anything with this yet, um, I kind of want just to bring it to your attention, because it was kind of on those Mondays where things just kept flying and adding, and I wanted to get some numbers and stuff for you, so...
So right now, there's no, no formal change order to approve on this one?
I, I don't think so yet, I'll probably be looking for one at the next meeting, okay, I'll get this stuff all put together and get an idea of it.
So you got a heads up on it?
Yeah, and all, and then, the other thing is that we've been kicking around for a while here is, is lining and coating the second wet well out in front of this lift station. We find, we, there was some talk that they weren't gonna be able to line it, then they were gonna be able to line it, they cleaned it and got an idea that they could, I got a price back today that, from Key, who said they could line it, it's, uh, with contractor, prime contract market, it's about sixteen thousand two hundred dollars. I think that's a pretty reasonable price for, for that work, so, um, I think that, I'll, just want to bring that to your attention, that we've solved that.
So this is lift station one, right?
Lift station one, yeah, and I'll combine this and this to make your change order for, for the next, for the next meeting, but uh, do any of you three have seen a reason why we wouldn't proceed with this, I guess that's a question I should ask you?
Fixes these things, and I just, I don't want them to, we don't want to come back in two years and have to do all this stuff.
Well, we're gonna tear the whole thing off.
Well, we were talking about that, it's, there's equipment that's already there.
Right.
People are there.
The bypassing is set up.
It saves money on the long term.
Right.
Yep, so just, the only downside is we have to wait, the construction project lengthens, because they've got a, they're gonna be there longer fixing more.
Yep, but they are on site, so...
Yep.
Okay, good, so we got that, uh, the water improvement, the water tie-in on the east side of Conroe Seventeen is done, they've tied in at Baldiment, at the school, in the north of Casey's. Right now, that's just being, um, tested for bacteria, hopefully they'll have that line in operation on Wednesday. Once they get that line in operation, they'll turn, wall will be on temporary water, they've strung out water, temporary water in the backyards, plumbed it into the houses, and that has passed bacteria test right now, so it's just a matter of getting the other line in operation to feed everything north of, of Wall Avenue. Uh, they do plan on closing Wall Avenue while they're working in there, uh, like I said, it'll probably be during the daily hours or working hours, unless things get late, then they'll just keep it up, on the weekends, they plan on taking it down and everything, so... Um, water, sewer, the Lost River projects, all the underground work is complete, the area base has been placed, and they were planning on starting the curb and gutter at the end of the week. Another item to note on there is we have received a letter from Warren Township about the diversion road, um, they weren't, it has been damaged due to excessive trucking. They have stated that they want it repaired, and I have talked to the contractor, and he's gonna maintain it throughout the project and repair it once it's done, so, what it takes, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, the township has requested two hundred yards of gravel, and we'll see where that goes, so, but... And they were, I did talk to them after I talked to contractor, and they were fine with just maintaining it until construction's done, they're done hauling over it and then repairing it, they're fine with that.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, the SSL, we were up to, down to two easements, and we're working on the funding, uh, Lucas, you're supposed to have been in contact with some of the landlords?
Yeah, yeah, peaceful planes is done, and then New Horizon Homes, do you want to discuss the request? Yeah, yeah, peaceful planes is done. And then New Horizon Homes, do you wanna discuss the request with with the city about just insurance to? Have the city connect, to have the city connect to Lakeview Heights addition, I guess. It's it's basically an engineering question, I think, is what it comes down to.
Can you support me, please? Thank you.
Thanks, Commission. Uh, Nate Bollmuth representing uh, or with Paces Lodging, representing Lakeview Heights. Um, basically, the request is um, it's not for the current plat necessarily. It's for parcels we have to the north that we have had for some time. We did acquire a parcel from the um, school, and then we also have, are in the process of acquiring parcels from the Christiansons. Um, and we wanna make sure that the sewer line that's going to Deer Creek is gonna have sufficient capacity for those developments. Um, so we're requesting a letter that would state that. Capacity will be. Held, or however you wanna state it, that basically, we don't want, say, a five hundred eight, five hundred unit development comes in tomorrow, and they put it. East of the school, and then they take all the sewer rights, and then we're up by Deer Creek, and we don't get any of it, because it's all taken. That's essentially what happened at the original Lakeview, is that that would have been developed ten years ago if we would have had capacity, and we didn't, so. We don't want it to happen again, so that's what Kevin has requested, that we have a letter that states that those capacities won't be taken away.
Well, the thing is, what's in operation today uh is essentially half, uh so the plan right now is to continue to use the lagoon structures for and. To basically send the minimum amount through the the uh sanitary sewer to for the Fargo connection. So right now, capacity, I believe, Jim, is fourteen hundred homes approximately, right? That that's the capacity of what is there, and and right now, even with Lost River, we believe the lagoons will be able to handle a portion of that, or a good portion of that, right? So uh, but right, that, and that's with what's in place now, but there's two lines that are gonna be buried there, right?
Two layers, yep.
So that both lines, if they were running a full, full load, could handle fourteen hundred homes, or would there be additional?
No, fourteen hundred puts us at our max for what Fargo is, would accept, based on the uh.
Okay, but the lift station, the connection, the connection point at Deer Creek is the maximum, is fourteen hundred homes.
Eight hundred gallons per minute, yeah.
Okay.
So and that that fourteen hundred is kind of roughly. Um, geographically, the land that Nate's talking about would make more sense to go to Deer Creek than anywhere else, so. Um, I, Kent was working on the numbers and whatever else with this, and hadn't provided me with anything more. Um, I now see where you where you're looking at doing it, so. I mean, this is, the land that they're requesting is the closest to Deer Creek, so it would make the most sense that if it was to go anywhere, it would go that way, so.
Right, but what we're looking at, it's like, okay, we do, there is an upper max that we've known this to Deer Creek, all right? And then there's gonna be, at some point, there'll be another pipe that will go east and hook into the forty-fifth intercept.
Right, so that that is, that this is the first stage of getting, making the connection. The second stage is a sixty-fourth avenue connection that would go from the Wilds nine, so potentially West Fargo connecting in. And then sending that over to the forty-fifth connector. So there there's a plan in place for a longer-term plan.
Mm-hmm.
To essentially massively expand the scope of, you know, what sanitary sewer that can be absorbed. So we'll have some details, I guess that's the question, or?
Well, I mean, I I understand the plan. We just don't wanna, I mean, that land. Soon as this pipe's in, that land's ready to go, so we'll probably start developing it, but we don't want, so say we start, say we put two hundred, I mean, that land could probably hold twelve hundred lots. So say we develop two hundred lots, and then all of a sudden, twelve hundred lots are developed in town, and we can develop the remaining. Thousand, that's what we don't want. And we don't wanna wait for the for the relocate, or the pipe to have to go to Fort history, because Fargo's not gonna develop that land for. Ten years. So we don't want to wait another, I mean, we've already waited thirteen years on the first current one, so that's why we're making the request.
Keep in mind, for this SSL, we always did have a, okay, option one is to go the route that we are going right now, and option two was to take the sanitary sewer and make the gravity feed connection up to forty-fifth. It was a more expensive option, so uh, and and whether Fargo approves that, or you know, how much Fargo pays for that is an interesting question, right? But that forty-fifth street connection was all, is, has always been in the plan, because we know that basically gives us an unlimited growth. According to what the Fargo engineers were telling us, right?
So I guess it really comes down to specifically, what amounts are you looking for? Do you have an idea of the numbers?
Thousand lots.
That's what you want, a thousand lots?
Yeah, but over, over how many years? See, this, because we're not gonna put a capacity in for a thousand lots.
Right, that's.
That's gonna develop over ten years.
Right.
Now, we'll probably have a capacity. Coming to do that. But if he, if he's worried about another twelve hundred lot development, okay, we don't have any plans.
No, but I'm thinking of what about the ones on seventeen, even though it's not a lot, but you might get, you know, fifty houses here from that development that's already existing that wanna hook up. You might get another here and a group here. You know, we, as a city, could currently look at potentially a couple hundred lots of hooking up over the next two to three years.
Yes.
That have, that are outside of current developments. There are certain that are existing developments, right?
Right.
Yeah, so. You know, from my side, I would, you know, I don't have any problem with putting some type of agreement together, but I'd wanna see the totals. I'd wanna see a timeline that we'd agree to, and yeah, ten year, ten years would not be, but we maybe say. Could we say thirty to forty percent of the capacity, and has to be used up within, you know, or at least the lots have to be developed within X number of years, that kind of thing, something like that. To, because once we have a capacity and we're running along, you know, we're gonna move forward, we'd have to move forward with that other line quickly, so.
What have you guys come up with for, I, estimates, or what?
Uh, this is the first that I've seen of the number. I know we talked, Kent and I talked a little about this afternoon, so I would say that we would go back and look at the numbers, just just to see what the projection flows were and what the. What the, what we had kind of fought for that area, you know, for a build-out, with what the city has adopted as far as the density in September of last year, I think it was. So that's what I was.
When are you looking to have this letter by?
We don't wanna sign an easement in the interim until we have the letter.
So we're catching twenty-two here. Well, but we gotta make sure that we've got, you know, that if we're gonna do this, that we're not committing to something that we can't do either.
Which land are you looking at, developing stock for the school?
North. We own the la, we own the land, we own the old, we had land there previously. That's north of like where you live, and then.
North of, oh.
So it's basically from sixty-fourth down to like seventy-third. We own that land.
Okay.
It makes logical sense. I'm just concerned that we're, as we go and ask these other developments, we need to have some capacity to pull some of those in.
Well, but I mean, what what are you really need in that letter? I mean, and uh, are you looking for a commitment to say, yes, we are, you know, gonna be bonded to. Put in capacity for another thousand homes over the next X number of years? Wha- what is it the year before?
No, we don't want you, it's not for the future capacity, it's for the current capacity that you're installing. We just don't wanna lose out on that. If if five hundred homes come in south of town, and all of a sudden, they're gonna use that line, and then all of a sudden, we're right next to the hookup, and we are, we can only put in three hundred homes, and then we have to wait another five years. That's what we don't wanna happen.
Keep in mind that the primary driver behind this connection that we're even talking about now was to support the school. So that was a driver. That's the reason we're having this discussion. So we're not gonna say, okay, now somebody else has come in and Olivia's acre, you know, some other development that says we wanna take up the capacity, and all of a sudden, that's gonna eat, you know, eat. What capacity would be there to support the school. So from that perspective, the design as it is today. Can handle the capacity of what we would expect to send either process from our lagoons or from the city of Fargo connection.
The design as it is today is based on the eight hundred gallons per minute that Fargo said they could provide. That's the, that's the kicker. It's not what we're sending to, it's what they can take.
Okay, but, okay, so do we have an estimate from the school of how much sanitary flow volume they will produce? So we're in a chicken and egg. If you can't tell me how much the school is gonna produce, I can't tell you whether we can handle it or not.
We we have the data of what we used as a density to figure out flows along those areas that Nate's talking on along that line. It's just something we have to go back and look at. I I don't have the numbers off top.
Well, but I would also say, though, I know that we, as a driver, is the school, but the school's on their own timeline, and based on the information we're seeing, that might be delayed a year, it might be two years, it might be kicked up. We don't, we don't know.
Right.
I mean, they're asking for a lock of, I'm gonna use up this much capacity, and I, as the city councilman, am saying, I need some type of, you know, there's gotta be skin in both sides of this. And so as long as, you know, we think about the other developments that are there, and that's kind of another thing is, to a point, it's a first come, first served basis, really. I mean, so that's why I'm saying there's a timeline, you know, we'll have to work within something with them to say, hey, we'll give you X amount of years to do it, but I, you know, just like. Can't let it hang out there for ten years without this holding another development too, so we have to be cognizant of both sides. I think it does take some more work.
So so you want, you wanna direct us to look into their request then and prepare something for them in two weeks?
Well, we don't, we don't wanna wait another two weeks. I mean, this is the problem. We're we're already running into a timeline issue where another two weeks is gonna put us at critical capacity, right, for timeline? So I don't think we have two weeks.
We got a meeting next week that we could.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we have two weeks, I guess is my question? The contractor's not telling, telling he's gonna start, doesn't wanna start. All indication is that it's gonna be later than sooner.
Basically, it comes down to, can they, if they're gonna be able to get this thing done this year, is what it's coming down to.
And there's, there's a completion date, I mean.
One of the questions I have is, are you, as a city council? Determined that. You will meet the. The growth in sewer requirements that we have. In other words, if if our sewer requirements exceed what we're, what we're gonna be capable of with Deer Creek connection. Is it your plan that we will be.
Moving forward with the other one?
Moving forward with the other one or some other.
Some other, some other route.
Yes.
Yep. My opinion, statements, yes. Again, it all comes down to dollars and cents. Suddenly, that comes out to be ten times more than we expected, than we had ready. That's the challenge.
We we could still go back to the, you either expand the capacity of the current lagoons, or we, you know, go with another connection to Fargo to be able to increase our capacity. Beyond the eight hundred gallon per minute limit that we have right now. So. I mean, that's, that's really the purpose of the city, providing that service, right, is to to be able to support the requested volume.
See, I, I'm, I'm, I fully understand their questions, because we have. For the first time. Ever. We're at the place where, you know, and for the last fifteen years, we're, we're no longer asking about what we can do.
Right.
The other, the other part of it uh is that we all, we have under option and essentially. Have the right of, I don't know what the proper term is. Lucas could probably help me, but we have the Christianson land under contract too, so. That's the other easement that's you're waiting on, and so we have control of that also, so. Once we come to an agreement, then everything gets approved, not just our piece, so. Cause you're waiting on Lakeview, and you're waiting on the other land that we currently own.
The city could potentially bore under seventeen, and wouldn't need the other one?
Yeah, but it's, I mean, Kent, Kent told me that they don't wanna do that. I mean, it's a waste of money.
But if it gets the project going, it, they, it would be basically similar cost?
Yeah, I mean, but then when that area wants to get hooked up, then that'll get special assessed again, is what Kent told me today. Because they won't essentially have access, because it'll be bored underneath their land instead of through their land. So it would, that land would bear more cost than it would have to if it was bored under. So.
But then you you could make the same assertion then to say, okay, if the plan is to develop that land for the north. So is that basically requesting capacity to handle that land as well for any development that would happen in that land? Or is is this just for the Lakeview Heights area?
No, I'm requesting for the land in the north. I'm not requesting for Lakeview.
Here's a, here's a map.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I'm not requesting for Lakeview, because it's, we're not gonna hit twelve hundred lots before that school probably goes up, so they're gonna.
Right, okay.
They're gonna tie into that. Land, or that line before.
I mean, I think it's worth the discussion, and I think it's something we should all look at. It's just, the numbers have to be the numbers that we're not putting ourselves in a corner, that's all.
So, so two weeks ago, the council didn't award the contract due to the easements not being signed. We don't have the easements tonight either.
Correct.
So we have time in our contract to hold it until the first meeting in August to award at that time. The facility plan, the draft facility plan is in the health department. The facility, the SRF funding application is in the health department for their review. We'll have any comments that they've gotten, implemented any comments that they've had prior to that August meeting. I don't think it's gonna push anything back by waiting to, letting us look at these numbers, look, address their request.
Okay.
Give you something that doesn't seem so rushed, you know, something that's.
The city council has thirty days to hold the three low bids, and then sixty to hold the lowest.
Okay.
Or still, we'd still be okay if we waited two more weeks? Should we still be all right then if we waited two more weeks?
Yes, the contractor hasn't indicated they wanna start with the next two weeks at all.
All right, I'd say we talk about this and then we come back.
So do you need, you need some direction?
Well, I I would like the council to direct us to look into this, yeah. That way, it's all in the minutes and everything that we're.
Well, I mean, so this, this is really an ex, an extension of the assess, or the easement, so. It is an additional investigation of the capacity of the connection.
Or is.
Over above.
Millions we're setting aside. We're trying to guarantee a certain amount for a given potential development upcoming.
Cause we also have to, Congress said we've got three other people at petition to hook into that line, you know, you've got Olivia's acres, you've got all west here, you've got the horseshoe bend area.
Yeah, and the system is be, is designed to operate within the constraints of the city, so if some can go to the lagoon, if the lagoons are low, and and there's ways of operating this.
Sure.
All to make the various aspects of it work.
We need your analysis to tell us that we're not crazy.
Yeah, just to make sure, you know, cause over, over.
I would rather look at it than tell you what, what am I thinking.
Well, cause there's, there's two elements to this, right? Cause if Olivia's acres and everything down south, right, if if we assume for a moment that 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 volume is gonna go into lagoons, right? Can that handle all that volume from down south until, while most of the volume north goes to the Deer Creek, and X, excess volume, let me rephrase that, excess volume goes to Deer Creek.
If you look at, if you wanna look at assumed numbers, if Nate's requesting a thousand units and Lost River ultimately is four hundred, there's your fourteen hundred units. That's nothing else outside of that. That's just.
Nate, what's your build-out possibility here? I mean, what are you guys looking at? You start, and what are you talking on, five, six years out, build out on this area to get to that?
We'd probably do, depending on the size of lots, which they'd probably be. I mean, it's probably fifty homes a year, maybe.
So if you're looking at some time, I mean, you guys are gonna be flopping down to two hundred homes a year.
Well. What's that?
Kind of zoning are you planning?
I mean, it's probably gonna be, I would say there's probably three to four lots per acre up there. The Wilds is, Wilds is two per acre. And those are big lots. I mean, those are, those are eighty thousand dollar lots in West Fargo.
All right, you know, that's, that's great, but.
And that's probably not where we're.
It's too big to me.
Yeah, and that's not where we're gonna probably put at that location. I mean, we'll probably put a mixture of that in there, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be a mixture between. Deer Creek, which is like four lots an acre, or five, and Wilds is two.
Right, somewhere in the middle.
That fifty homes per year is kind of what we've been using for our projections is moving forward. Cause some might be less, some might be more, so it seems like it's pretty doable.
So it's, it's still over ten years. It still would be over a ten-year period, right?
Yeah, I mean, it could.
Or potentially longer.
Yeah, I mean, there's probably, I mean, there's over a thousand lots in there, there could potentially be over a thousand lots in there. So I mean, that's twenty years.
Right.
Now, I don't know that you expect it to hold it that long, I mean, I understand that, but we also, I mean, if it's, the part is the fact that we're made, we're in front of the connection point and we don't want to lose that connection point because, I mean, just from a planning standpoint, it doesn't make any sense that we don't lose it, but stuff happens, so that's why we have to have a conversation.
Let's let the engineers do the analysis and come back with the recommendation.
Let's come back in two weeks and talk about this, in the meantime, we can have some more conversation.
I think you should also talk with Lucas that basically you're coming forward to something that could be very quickly signable.
Yep.
Yeah, and I'd say two weeks, come back with some stuff and be ready to go.
Yep.
Nate, does that work?
Yeah, and I, I mean, hopefully we have back and forth, so when we come back in two weeks, we'll sign it, or it's signed and you, we just, you know.
So we can move on with things here, but let's make sure we got some numbers out.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Um, let's see, there's really nothing to report till we get down to the, that, we're still looking at that truck route, I don't know if John's had any opportunity to meet with anybody in the industrial area down there to talk about benefit areas or whatever, but if, we should be really getting on that to try to get that, keep going forward.
Yep.
I want to get that. At least to, at least a month, month and a half, that we've kind of, haven't gone anywhere on that one, so.
Ryan asks me about it every time he sees me, so.
Who does?
Ryan, Wyby.
Wyby.
Just about three times a week.
Uh, the last three items under the street projects, so Chestnut, we have sufficient protests, so that one is done for the time being, the Maple and the Northwood and Southwood. Um, the next phase in that would be plans and specs, right? Lucas?
For what, John?
Maple and North and Southwood.
Yep.
So if you would like, you would direct us to prepare plans and specifications for those projects to get them going, I'm not real sure how the workload is right now to fit them into the timeline, but it's something that we can look at and have an update for you on at the August meeting, it's, I'm not sure we could get them done this year, but we could at least maybe get them bid and have a completion date next summer for, next fall for some of this, so.
So if that occurs, um, in our development, there's a couple of spots that can't wait that long, there's a couple of patches that need to be done.
Okay, so that's one I would think that we could do, if we would get everything going, we could get the concrete work done this year and maybe some, maybe like a chip seal or something could be wait, could be done.
Sure.
At the beginning of next year, like we did with Seventy Third, we did the paving and whatever else, and then we followed it up with the chip seal next year.
I'd rather just patches and the drainage done in our development this year versus anything.
So with fifteen and nineteen, you need a direction to proceed with engineering?
With plans and specifications, preparation of plans and specifications.
Resolution to, to direct the engineer to repair plans and specs.
So moved. Second.
Are we doing these as one?
Just do it together.
We're going to do them, that's for both now, right? Okay.
Yep.
Dave, first?
First.
Yep.
And Brian?
And second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, yeah, let's get that moving.
Okay, well, one, one, moving back, so that's fifteen and sixteen, uh, is the stormwater policy?
Uh, we've got to sit down with the attorney, we just have to make the time to do it.
I just looked at state law and stuff, last week I was working on it and looking into it and seeing kind of what's required from it.
Okay.
I'm probably going to make, shorten it up quite a bit, because it's twenty pages now and I think a lot of it can come out.
Okay, because we can rely on the state policy, is that your thinking?
Um, there's just a lot of penalty. There's a lot of penalty section stuff in the current one that wouldn't apply anyways, it basically says that the engineer can issue penalties and I don't think we want that in there.
But we wouldn't be taking out penalty ability, I mean, right?
No, it'll just go somewhere else.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Because there's like, there's an appeal process and it's just really drawn out and I just think it can be simplified.
Okay.
So the other one I had on here was about the removal of water meter replacement.
Yeah, I haven't had thirteen seconds to work on this, so.
What?
Vance, is there really? Okay, twelve seconds, I need some time. Vance, I would just, I'm going to be gone this week, so do you have a chance to, I don't know what we need to assemble to have a proposal that we can review? Could you, I mean, you basically know where we would draw the funds from to cover the cost of this, right? Basically what we had talked about. So I guess maybe that if you could draw up a proposal that we could then present for the council to approve and how we allocate those funds for that, that's, yeah, you and I had talked about it and I think we're in general agreement on how we proceed.
Yes, sir.
So we just need to get the proposal that we can review and approve.
I'll do it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Looking back at number twelve, we have received a letter from Horseshoe Bend Trailer Park while connecting to the SSL two. With the information provided tonight by Nate and whatever, I think we should look a little more into that a little sooner, and we'd always thought about it being a twenty-eight construction, twenty eighteen construction, I mean, so we'd work on it kind of sooner, but I think maybe we want to think about that a little sooner, like now, to kind of get an idea of what they're going to be sending that way to.
We had also talked about reaching out to some other developments.
Yeah.
I mean, do we, do we include other developments in that general area to say, if we're going to do this, do we do this to more neighborhoods than just that one?
Yeah, and with, with, what we thought we could do in the winter of seventeen, fall of eighteen is now being pushed up by a request that we just got tonight.
Right.
So, um, we'll take that into account based on the adopted flows from last year and we'll just have, we'll work with that, we'll just have to work within that and keep that in our thought, in our mind, I guess, so. The Olivia's one, the Olivia's one, we kind of anticipated bringing that into the lagoon right away, the Olivia Acres one, bring it into the lagoon and using the lagoon for that, so.
Because we still don't have a good assessment of the capacity of the current lagoons, right? We, we don't know how, right now, how many additional homes we could take in lagoons based on the drawdown.
With what we have, with the insight that we've got now from Sweene's, they're installing it on lift stations, we're getting some more historical runtime data, and you guys will start looking at doing your discharges this fall, so we'll have some more of that information and then maybe we'll have a better idea of where, where we're sitting with the lagoons.
Because that we can certainly use as our buffer.
Yeah.
You know, bring out.
Is there any type of maintenance or anything we may have to do to the little lagoons?
That was done, that was done.
That was done a few years ago.
Yeah, we had, we had proposed doing that with the lining project, it was not real beneficial doing that, we did it separately, city funded, took care of some of the dike and some of the things just to kind of increase its lifespan, you know.
Yep, okay, good. If there's anything else we need to think about, if that's an avenue for us to gain some buffer and make this potentially.
And we haven't gone through a full freeze or any real rain events that we've lined the sewers now, they were lined this winter, and we haven't really seen anything. We would assume that it would go down, obviously, with cutting down the clear water that gets in, but just wanted to make data to see that yet, so.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, that's all I got, unless you have anything else.
Anything else?
Got any other questions or?
Pedestrian crossing, we'll, we'll still talk about that one.
Yep, we're, we're moving along with that, I've got some numbers from distributor on the, Sharon asked me to look into those DSDSes a little more, she approached some people about potentially sponsoring them. Um, I did get some numbers, some rough numbers from a distributor, you know, five grand for all the hardware, not installing the signs, stuff like that, so, but we'll keep pushing on with that and get something sooner than later on that too.
All right. Okay.
Cool.
Anything else?
Good. All right, move on to portfolio report, Sharon is not here this evening, so we'll forego that one. And Brian, you're up.
We already talked about the one that I wanted to talk about, so I have, I don't have any, anything additional to add.
Sounds good. Dave?
Uh, we have completed four interviews for the assistant editor position, we have another three so far this week planned.
How many total candidates?
We're looking, we had a total of over fifty candidates, but we tried to get out between eleven and ten and eleven candidates to interview. So we're doing our first round, they generally have thirty minute interview that Vance and I do on the phone, and we're going to try and get all of our initials done this week so that we can make a determination. Our goal, we have communicated to each of the people we're interviewing, is it's going to be a three to four week process to get all the way through.
Okay.
For pool of wins. So far, good candidates that we've looked at. And then I will bring back.
So when we get to those four, when we get to those four, those will be in person interviews?
Uh, the next tier, we said out of the, out of the ten or eleven that we do, we're going to probably pick our top three, and yes, they would be in person, Sharon is the, I reached out, you know, I said, or a lot of it, so Sharon will be, they'll be the three of us again.
Okay. So you guys will be the ones that narrow it down and make the approval or select the one from those, okay?
Yep, correct.
Where, where will we be having those meetings?
Uh, probably here.
I think we should open those up because those might be considered, um, the governing body doing work if there's three of you or two of you, so just to maybe post notice on the door that you're doing an interview for those, whenever you have those interviews.
The, because it is an HR type perspective, can we keep those as non-public meetings?
Well, who's meeting with them?
You and. It would be me, Sharon and Vance, so yes, it would be three quote unquote, public.
Um, I'll look into it and then I'll send an email and let you know.
How did they do it when they interviewed the engineer?
I don't know, I wasn't here.
Vance, was that a public meeting, each engineering interview?
I think there were just two, I think that there was just two that came, did the interviewing, I can't remember who it was.
Well, I'm assuming it was two council members.
It was two councilors, yep. And I don't remember if there was anybody else on that or not.
Well, then, if it's a problem to have a second councilperson on, then we would get down to just Vance and I.
Yeah.
The person.
It could be a school chair.
Yes, I mean, I just wanted another set of eyes.
Yeah, absolutely, but it could be argued that it, that it is.
Not going to be public meetings, so.
If you want to just check on that.
Check on it, let me know.
Yep.
So we know going forward too.
Just need to deal with a lot of it with other cities.
Yeah.
Well, in fact, when I hired Adam, it was just Shane and I, so, yeah.
So, yeah.
Go ahead.
Steve?
I know the city of Bismarck and city of Miami, because they've been hiring and stuff, they got their hands slapped a little bit or something because they were not totally open. And I know the state board's been going through hell for not being open. Where all the dust settles, I don't know, but I'm just saying.
I don't think Sharon would mind it.
Yeah.
Under the circumstances. Correct, correct, no, I agree, I just, yeah, anyway, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
But then I'll just bring all the labor stuff we talked about for the budget by next time, that's all.
Perfect.
Oh, and just to reiterate at the meeting here, I have gotten Greg Lance, who owns the land next to here, has given me a proposal for what he's looking for, he's given me detailed descriptions of the land, I did contact a commercial realtor to get a rough idea of value, um, so I have gotten that back, so now Vance and I can kind of work together to try and start a negotiation, so.
Cool.
Okay.
Cool.
All right, so John's not here, my portfolio was, I talked to Steve Fisher about getting on the assessment committee and he graciously agreed to do that, so I would like to appoint him onto the commission, the assessment commission. I did talk to Lucas about this afternoon, so he'd get all those they could need tomorrow, so.
So now the mayor would need confirmation from the city council approving his appointment.
You know Steve.
Yep. I will vote to nominate, appoint.
Confirm, confirm the mayor's appointment.
Assessment committee.
Second.
Brian is, is the motion, Dave is the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Does he know what he signed up for?
Yeah, I talked to him today.
I do have a, I, you know, I have contacted, it's actually Steve who's in the audience here as well, is to be willing to, so if there's somebody who's been on that committee for years and would like to move off, we do have another potential resident that would be willing to be on that committee, so I think that's something we should think about for future.
Agreed. That's it for what I'm going to talk about this evening, so, uh, move on, Ben, Adam, Frank, Joe, got anything back there?
I got nothing real exciting, other than just figuring out, we got that letter sent here.
The letter, okay.
That resonated.
Yeah, if I, I'll look at my email again, but just a letter saying stop draining where he's draining, or what?
I'll send you what, what you have him sending.
Okay.
And Perry's a scratch?
Yep, Perry's a scratch, so you're up.
I don't, I, I don't have anything other than.
He sent the letter.
Yes.
So they're on the clock with that, that's all that matters right now, okay?
I really don't have anything else.
We'll just do some.
Like we said to the thirty first, maybe?
Aye.
It's got a plan.
Technology, yeah.
Are they still meeting, what day was the planner?
Yes. That is still a go.
But yeah, whatever date that you and I talked about, that's the date we put down, so then, yeah, the city ordinance is just required forty eight hours and all this for that, so.
Yep.
I may have, because I still, I do have one other thing, you and I and Lucas have talked about the municipal judge.
Yep.
And I had tentatively lined something up to take it to the county level and you emailed me back and said, no.
Yeah, I don't think we want to take it to the county level because as soon as you do that, then they would get all of your fines and whatnot, and if it ever does come about, the city's not getting any of that, and on top of it, Kindred started their search because they had the same judge, so Sarah is working with them, and if they line somebody up, then they're going to call us or call the city for us and see if they can use the same person.
Right.